Everybody's ready, we'll get started. Welcome to the Monday, March 10th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I had to look at my date. All rise please for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. We have to begin our meeting tonight with a public hearing, so we'll officially open the public hearing up to discuss the 2014 Small Cities Program application and to solicit citizen input for renovations to the Virginia Connolly residence, Dr. Owen Murphy Apartments. Is there anyone here who is interested in speaking on that public hearing? Yes, sir.
Robert Kalischman. I think Brian's standing up here and asking this board, what took you so long? We have seniors that live out there, and the repairs are needed, and we have money for performing arts, we have money for a lot of frivolous programs such as the bike book, and we have senior citizens and disabled that live over there. A lot of people, though they would like to be wealthy, don't have the privilege or the blessing of being wealthy. So a lot of times they have to, more or less, go along and look to benevolency of the people who live in a town. Fortunately, the fathers of the community, I should say fathers and mothers of the community, were far sighted enough to make arrangements for this sighted community. And of course, as a lot of yous will attest to, I've stood and asked about the benevolency of the Enno family, in particular the Major, who left Enno Farms and the property and the house and everything to the town of Simsbury. And I often say to myself, if he were to come back and look what's being done with that facility, he would scream bloody murder. It was never intended to operate the way that's operating over there. That was intended for the people who lived in Simsbury. It wasn't intended for Ethel Walker, it wasn't intended for anybody. It was intended for the people that were on hard times. So like I say, I won't belabor a point, this is a program that is long in coming, and everyone here should take time to write a little note to their congressman, to their senator, to their state senator, to their state representative, and the state governor, appraising him of the fact that we are applying for a grant. And it's not for the young and people that can well afford. This is for people that have given to the community, they lived in the community, they lived in Connecticut, and now in the dawning or the twilight of their lives, I think we ought to make it real accommodating for them. We ought to have good lighting there, we ought to have good heating there, we ought to have sidewalks, we ought to have sewers, and above all, we ought to have AAA housing. Thank you for putting this on the agenda, Madam for select.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? At this point, I will call on Ed Lamontaine and Peter Testa from L. Wagner Associates just to brief the board during the public discussion of what the application would entail. Welcome, Ed.
Thank you. We're sure you're coming back?
I called him up and he lost the room. I don't know what to do about that.
Something we said. I'm just going to give a brief overview of what we are looking to do with the Small Cities Grant. At this point, we're looking to secure approximately $700,000 to $800,000. The money is going to be used for infant infrastructure improvements, which include a new roadway, which is going to encompass repaving, drainage, the addition of handicap parking spaces, which are non-existent currently, as well as placing curb cuts on the sidewalks where they are indicated, again, which is currently non-existent. We'd like to redo the sidewalks, and though they were patched not too long ago, nonetheless, the sidewalks leading up to the Murphy Apartments, there's a four-inch drop between the sidewalk and the threshold. We are seeing a lot more applications of individuals with disabilities. Individuals, young individuals that are wheelchair users, that have scooters for mobility, or may use walkers, having that four-inch height from the sidewalk to the threshold of the apartment essentially makes the apartments inaccessible. I'm surprised the Aging Disability Commission hasn't taken care of this before. I'll have to talk to that person. So the improvements also include a new roof for Virginia Connolly. And the justification for these two projects comes from a capital needs assessment report that was done on behalf of the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, and it was completed last May. And that report demonstrated that the roadway is basically 20 years beyond its useful life. In fact, it was past-
I know, I've driven on it.
Yes, and it's worse now, unfortunately, because of the winter we had. There's a lot of frost heaves, and the plows have- we've tried to patch it this past year with limited success. Unfortunately, the patches are now cracking because of the winter. One of the- so the roof at VCR is, and that is four years beyond its total expected life. And even though it doesn't leak, any good contractor will tell you to replace the roof before it leaks, not after it leaks. So we find that this is an opportune time to do that. Do you want to?
Hello, my name is Peter Testa from Wagner Associates. Just to go over some of the work that has occurred at Virginia Connolly and Dr. Owen Murphy Apartments. Back in 2006, the town of Simsbury received a grant from then the Department of Economic and Community Development, which is now Department of Housing, for repairs at those two facilities. We did select roofing replacement at Dr. Owen Murphy, we did some exhaust fans, ventilation. The majority of the work was done at Virginia Connolly. New handicap entrance was installed with automatic doors, a little vestibule of sorts to an airlock. There was a great deal of flooring that was done, ADA improvements to the community building- I'm sorry, to the community room, the laundry facility, and a great deal of flooring was replaced in the facility, as were all windows installed throughout the entire complex. So that project was very well received, and it was finished on time and well within budget. Actually, I think we even had a little bit of extra money, that we did some additional work towards the end of the project. This grant, as explained earlier, is for this facility. It is not going to generate any program income. Program income would come from either the sale or repayment of any of the activities funded through CDBG, and this will not be. It's an outright grant to the housing authority. The town is the recipient from the state, and then the housing authority is the sub-recipient, so it will not produce any program income. Okay?
Thank you, thank you, Peter. Thank you, Ed. Just want to thank you for assisting the town in applying for these funds and for the Board of Selectmen's support to go after this project. This is a tremendous amount of work, and I do want to acknowledge both Tom Cook and Ed Lamontaine's commitment. They had workshops to go to, some of the boards already voted on, the boards already voted on some of the paperwork that we went into updating all of the regulations and policies. And Wagner Associates is a tremendous partner in helping us make sure that this very complicated technical application is done right. This is a significant amount of money, because there's a significant amount of renovations that are needed for the housing. And I think this is a, we're going to work real hard to get this grant, and I know you guys are working really hard to get this grant, so we're really grateful. So at this time, I'll open up any other comments that might, we have time on our agenda to discuss it further, but I'll open up for any other public comments during the public hearing portion. So thank you again. Any other public comments? Going once, going twice. If there's no comments, then I ask that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Move that we close the public hearing?
Well, in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is recognition of Officer Tracy Dunn as a first responder hero. We are hoping that Tracy would be here tonight so that the public could publicly acknowledge her, but I'm sorry to say that she is sick, very sick today, and couldn't make the meeting tonight. So I know we've previously recognized Tracy for her heroic efforts. She was off duty playing golf when she heard of someone in need, having a sudden cardiac arrest and in desperate need of assistance. Tracy immediately went to work using her experience as a police officer for the town of Simsbury. Fortunately for the gentleman on the course that day who was experiencing cardiac arrest, there was also another off-duty fire department official from Hartford on the course. So they sprung into action, and they immediately started CPR and used the AED to help save this man's life until proper professionals, medical professionals could arrive. For Tracy's heroic, and Yuan's sheriff, who was also from Hartford Fire Department, for their tremendous action, they were honored Friday morning at a breakfast by the American Red Cross. They were identified as one of a number of American Red Cross heroes. Fortunately, the chief and a few of the officers and I were able to be there at 7:00 a.m. when Tracy got her award at Hartford. And we were really thrilled to celebrate, it really was a wonderful celebration. Tracy did a great job crediting her training at the town of Simsbury and crediting her experience as a police officer with being able to put that training into practice and save someone's life. So I wanted to publicly thank Tracy and the chief for running a great department, and her fellow officers for supporting her, and just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank Tracy for really bringing tremendous honor on herself and her town, so. If we could publicly thank Tracy, perhaps we'll get her out of a meeting when she's healthy and bring her back so we can honor her as well. We'll move now directly to public audience. Is there anyone who'd like to address the Board of Selectmen? Yes?
At a recent naming hearing, State Representative John Hampton stated that he lived at 33 Canal Street. It appears in the public record that this home has a medical office and apartments in an R-15 residential zone, and therefore is a violation of Simsbury zoning regulations. According to town records, Dr. Owen Murphy lived in and had a medical office in the building. In 1972, Dr. Murphy retired and lived with his daughter. It appears that the house was vacant. According to town records, in 1976, the house was designated home occupation, doctor's office. In 1977, an applicant applied to ZVA for use variance to allow expansion of medical practice, denied. 1979, the applicant applied to zoning for zone change from R-15 to PO, professional office, denied. 1979, an applicant applied to ZVA for use variance for pediatric facility, denied. On November 17th, 2008, oh, excuse me, this is the picture of the facility with the sign. On November 17th, 2008, both Tom and Cheryl Vincent, 499 Hop Meadow Street, and Dr. Toscano appeared before the zoning commission asking for a zone change for the use of, to their respective buildings. Chairman Barney stated, and I quote, "There is no obligation on the part of the town to change a zone just because the owner's circumstances changed," end quote, denied. All town professional staff and elected officials have written that 33 Canal Street was non-compliant. However, on July 2009, Dr. Gabriel hired TJ Donahue to write an opinion that stated that the present use was grandfathered in, although no commission, boy, or professional staff approved of the alleged illegal use of the building. Then on March 2010, without any thorough investigation, Town Attorney DeCresenzio wrote an opinion stating that TJ Donahue's opinion, quote, "Satisfies the legal requirement of illegal non-conforming use," end quote. This opinion is in direct conflict with decades of denials by professional town staff and elected town officials that the building's use was non-conforming and that the use was grandfathered in. These programs appear to be abuse of power and should be rejected as fact. On February 214, there was a memo in the building department file from Jim Shay, zoning enforcement officer, describing my conversation about the file for 33 Canal Street. I did not sign the memo or acknowledge its veracity. Is town staff required to write down and file all conversations with their interaction with the people, asking for guidance? According to town records, GF Corporation, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Spott owned 33 Canal Street in 1976, four years after Dr. Murphy retired. According to town records, Luria Giacoli of Bologna, Italy, had a mortgage on the property. In 2008, the assessment card states that Latta Corporation, Gabriel, owns the building, and the building is designated a two-family home. Dr. Gabriel lives at 3331 Bushy Hill Road, Simsbury. There's a sign on the property that was not approved by the town, and town staff could not provide a certificate of occupancy for the building. According to zoning regulation, offices in residential zones cannot have a sign on the property and has numerous cars in the driveway. There is no evidence of a signed permit or that the sign was approved. It appears that the owners of this property have continued to violate zoning regulations and should be made compliant. How can a state representative live in an illegal building that is non-compliant with zoning regulations? Recently, there have been several articles in the Hartford Current about shady characters involved in the marijuana factory, industry. The headlines were "A Simsbury Man Convicted to Medical Marijuana Facility Sentenced in Fraud Case," March 3, 2014; "A Medical Pot Grower Chosen by State Lost License in Colorado," March 4, 2014. It is alleged that a representative from Curaleve, the owner of the medical marijuana facility in Simsbury, called the Hartford Current with concerns about the article. It is alleged that before Curaleve can start the business, all other businesses must vacate the premises. The second article noted that Diane Whitney was representing Advanced Grow Labs with a marijuana facility approved in West Haven. Attorney Diane Whitney is a member of Pullman &amp; Connolly law firm. The article mentioned that Andrew Glassman, a member of Pullman &amp; Connolly, called the Hartford Current with concerns. Andrew Glassman is the husband of First Elector Mary Glassman. The West Haven marijuana factory was used by Governor Malloy for a photo op. Both articles alleged that there was illegal activity associated with the marijuana business approved by the state. According to Consumer Protection, they were investigating all allegations written in the articles. I was very surprised that the investigations surrounding Advanced Grow Labs and allegations of issues in Colorado associated with the company were completed in a few days. How can Consumer Protection complete an investigation so quickly? Was pressure placed on Consumer Protection by members of Pullman &amp; Connolly to close the investigation immediately? Is this politics as usual? Recently, the town published a comprehensive annual financial report for the fifth year, and the June 30th, 2013. Blum Shapiro audited the town's finances and wrote a management report with recommendations about internal controls. He says, "We recommend that all entries be reviewed and that a proper sign-off indicating review be included on the journal entry support. The capital asset reporting, we recommend the town implement policies and procedures to ensure proper documentation is maintained of all asset addresses, and there is proper review of capital assets at year-end to ensure all assets are included and classified appropriately." They described the status on prior-year recommendations. "We recommend the town implement review procedures at the end of the year to identify any issues prior to audit. The claims incurred but not reported should be recorded, and claims should be recorded and reconciled to vendor confirmations prior to the audit via work." The town and the Board of Education are in the process of creating an accounting procedures manual. Recommendation: During the June 30th, 2013 audit, it was noted the town should consider implementing a positive pay system with the bank. Positive pay is an automated fraud detection tool offered by most banks. Is the town working towards correcting these deficiencies? Blum Shapiro was given $14,000 to review the performing arts and other entities of money management. What were the findings of that report? Thank you for listening, and all my comments will be on www.com and Simsbury Patch.
Thank you. I just want to state for the record that my Hopkins clients do not have anything to do with the town of Simsbury, and so there's no conflict, and I appreciate you mentioning the firm's name because you're always looking for some new clients.
And this is the letter that I, and here's the letter that was in the file.
Thank you.
Don't you want to? Yes, sir.
As you all know, I attended the budget meeting on Friday, and I sat here. And I think you're aware of it, but I'd like to more or less bring it to your attention. As we sat here, and we came, and I think there were maybe three, four, possibly five people in the audience that were here to address the budget. And I think they should be applauded for, you know, coming to the meeting to look and see what's going on. And as you'll agree with me, you're having trouble with the figures. For somebody to sit in the off, in the audience, and hear these figures bandied about and not have any knowledge of the figures, I think is, it's very, very difficult. It is for me, anyway. I'm not, I'm not a rocket scientist, I never perform, I prefer to be one. But what I'm trying to get at is this, that when the figures were being bandied about and handed to people, there were people in the audience that asked for a copy. They were totally ignored, and at times it became vindictive. And then finally, begrudgingly, the last paper handout was handed out by the town administrator to the people in the audience. And that was this right here, this, the, your wish list, or whatever it was. That was the only one that was handed to us. We asked about the other figures, totally ignored, begrudgingly. And I'm here to ask the First Electmen and this board, is the administration here to assist and answer questions of the taxpayer, or are you here through your administrator to dictate and look down your nose at us? Now, having said that, I only have to say it once. You're not being fair, or you're not being courteous, and you're not respecting your citizens that are coming to these hearings. And somebody on this dius should have said, "Look, let's stop the meeting, get them the figures. If it's that important to you, it must be important to the citizens." Now, having addressed that issue, and I certainly hope, Madam for select women, you'll correct it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kalischman, I don't know what you're asking for. I apologize. I don't understand.
Let me walk you through it.
And maybe we could, I don't want to take time in public audience, but I'm happy to get you-
When we were here, no, you do this all the time, Madam for-
I'm happy to get you whatever you need, Mr. Kalischman.
You try to swing around and more or less justify what was done. There's no justification to it.
If you could tell us what you'd like a copy of, I'm happy to provide.
Okay.
Thank you.
What I'd like a copy of is when you're discussing financial figures like you were at the last meeting on Friday night, when you hand out handouts, right, and there's only two or three people in the audience, which there was, three to five people, you can very well give the extra copies to the people. You don't have to keep everybody in the dark. And that's, and that's the purpose of my, of the question. Now, getting back to a couple other items. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but in your discussion of solar energy, the town of Wallingford, Connecticut, has their own electric power company. They're very successful at it. Their rates are extremely low, the service extremely high. Maybe you want to go down there or send somebody from your energy committee to go down and figure, if they can do it, why can't we do it? The other thing was, the tariff, if that's adjacent to the state park, why don't you give the property to the state rather than spend $37,000 to add a walkway? Why don't you give it to the state, and maybe the state will put in the walkway? Because out that area, it's all forges and gorges, and it's, it's a canyon. So it's dangerous to walk there in the first place. In the second place, I just think this is just an extension of the greenway, which we've been paying for unbeknownst to us. And then there was one other item that changed my attention, and was the- Well, I won't belay every point, but that was the, that was the whole matter of the- And here again, I come to you, and I, and I respect you allowing me the five minutes or whatever I may take to address the board. I go direct to the source. I could very well start knocking on doors and telling the people that they're paying $8,000 for a bike book that nobody wants. They're paying, that they have a marijuana factory or facility that's going in on Grishmell Road that nobody wants. And to the Republican members that were elected, the people of Simsbury elected you to do a job. They, they elected you because they didn't like the way things were going, or they would have kept it 3-3. They want 4-4. That's the most they can go. And the reason they did that is because they're not happy what's going on. And yet you sit here, you don't come up with your own budget, you go along to get along, and it's the same thing. You can say what you want, you have the same type of budget you had the last time, and you have the same type of budget you had four years ago. That budget hasn't changed one bit, and who are you trying to give? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Thank you off, oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
It's the trifecta, Mary.
Happy to have you.
Subhanar's, 119 East Pityug Street. We had just, our neighbors had all just dealt with a historic district application for a property across the street from me. And my neighbor, who used to be a town planner, I'm just educating you on this, Mary, went into town hall and was told that she couldn't see the file unless Howard was there. into town hall and was told that she couldn't see the file unless Howard was there. And in the past, there's been a file, and I think when, years ago, during all the Target stuff, some of the residents went to FOIA to make sure that there was going to always be an open file. I know years passed, when it was first on planning, there was always an open file that residents could come look at. It's supposed to be at the convenience of them, not staff, because they don't have a lot of time in their day, and staff's supposed to be here. So to keep having to say, "No, you have to come back to see it," when staff is there, I mean, it's, you know, another thing that Hyrum runs that I think is flawed. So, and as you know, I have a huge list of things that he's done that are flawed. And as I continue to talk about land use, I know that we're going to have that Economic Development Task Force, and I just want to recognize that we need to make sure that we keep our character of our town while doing that. CCCR assisted living place is going up in Avon, and years past, we were supposed to get it, but because, I guess, McLean didn't want it, we didn't get it. So that's one thing we lost, and maybe we can discuss why the gentleman who wanted to develop here that went to Avon, who has the software site for Vermont, like Vermont Teddy Bear and all the shipping, is in Avon. And I kind of think we need to just find out, you know, and make sure that we bring in the appropriate things and give the people the message that that's the type of development we want, and not necessarily the other stuff which might be deterring them. So, and in closing, I just want to address my addressing public audience. When I was growing up, I had two pretty strong women in my life, one being my mom and the other one being Mrs. Antonio. Mrs. Antonio passed away this year, and they live four houses down from us. I was best friends with Leah. We did the whole, "Call me when you get off the bus." We went to each other's houses every day after school. And as everybody knows, Mrs. Antonio was kind of a bright personality. And in my forward way, even when I was eight, we were in the back of the station wagon, and Mrs. Antonio had her A-track music on. And I said, "Mrs. Antonio, you really don't have that good a voice." And she said to me, "Susan, don't let anyone ever tell you, you can't do anything." So between her and my mom, who, when it was snowing out, and she wanted to change the bus route, because we had to walk all the way down the street to get the bus, she took Anthony Pinzon, the Assistant Vice, Assistant Superintendent, for a walk. He developed pneumonia, and they moved the bus route. So I'm one to very much advocate. I had some really positive memories. I was going through some, some photo albums, and I was seeing Mrs. Antonio and my mom and laughing. She is the one that dubbed my mother Mrs. Clean and that you could eat off the floor in our house. Not now, but when she was... Just stating that for the record.
We won't, we won't put that in the minutes.
But that is true. So in any event, I feel a really strong, as you guys know, I feel fairly strongly about land use, and I'm going to continue to advocate for the right land use as long as I'm here. And hopefully we'll start really following the right direction, and I can stay home and watch Monday night TV, because I really would rather be there, no offense.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Okay, well, thank everybody for their, yes, one more.
Good evening, thanks for the time. Allowing me the time to address some questions that I have regarding the entry exit access from Hoskins Road to developers' construction site. I have several questions I would just read up. One, what is the procedure for a developer to get a permit for the entry and exit access for the developers' construction vehicles? Two, if the town granted approved permit for the entry exit access, in this particular case, did the town consider the closeness of two neighborhood streets? Was there a site inspection as to feasibility of the entry exit access? Did the town investigate the safety issues posed to road users and surrounding residents, especially to the Newberry Court residents? And more to this question are the following. Why entry exit at the present location between Clifton Drive and Newberry Court other than to suit the developers' convenience of direct access and close proximity to the excavation site? Has the town addressed the level of safety issues posed to road users and particularly to residents passing through Hoskins Road? As you approach, just to give you an idea of the, the site or the map, of the location, as you approach towards Clifton Drive on the left, traveling from Firetown and Laurel Lane, there's a slight bend, and about 50 to 75 yards past Clifton Drive, immediately after on the right is Newberry Court. Therefore, line of visibility is not great when construction vehicles are pulling out of the entry and exit access. With spring around the corner, traffic, both people, walkers, joggers, cyclists, young and old, and older people like us, and vehicles were increased. Was there some thought put into it about these safety issues posed to the users? With a present site for construction vehicles to move in and out onto Hoskins Road, it's just waiting for an accident to happen. To illustrate my deep concern and utter dismay, firstly, early last week, my husband, who was driving my youngest child to the high school at 7:00 a.m., spotted a large rock bigger than the fist of, of my fist. Fortunately then, there was no oncoming traffic, and he was able to avoid the large rock on the road. However, unfortunately for my oldest son, who drives to and fro high school daily, came home with utter disbelief to the mess on the road that afternoon. He was driving home from school, and as he was approaching Newberry Court, where we live, at about 2:25 p.m., he saw rocks all over the street right off the construction entry and exit point. There was oncoming traffic, and he could not avoid not going over the rocks, not just one rock, many rocks. And indeed, one rock hit the tire. Hard enough to puncture it. Brand-new snow tire. Well, we brought the tire into the shop. It cannot be repaired and must be replaced. We just had a call this afternoon, there's no more stock. And my husband called at least a couple of other tire shops, they don't have any more stock. We have to change out to summer tires, while winter season is not over yet. So we have to wait till October for us to place the replacement tire order, and needless to say, we are not thrilled to hear all these news. Secondly, there was another occasion when my husband was pulling out Newberry Court onto Hoskins Road to fetch my youngest son to the high school. A truck was pulling out of the entry exit access at the same time. My husband and driver saw each other and both stopped at the same time for one to give way to the other to pass through. The sure proximity of the construction vehicles that are pulling out and oncoming traffic round the bend, traveling towards Newberry Court or Squadron Line, and those coming out of Newberry Court, traveling towards Firetown Road, to say the least, is a dangerous and accident hazard location. When trucks pull out from the exit access, even at their very slow speed, and especially when fully loaded, it takes some time for truck drivers to maneuver before they can fully turn around to the lane they want to exit. The next point is, there is a bus, this, this really amazed, surprised me, there is a bus route that comes off Clifton Drive onto Hoskins Road, and there is a school bus stopped right on Hoskins Road off Newberry Court. What is this about allowing the accessibility at the convenience of the developer, but at the expense of our children's safety and to the overall detriment of the safety of the rest of us? That reinforced the point I raised earlier about the space and time that truck drivers needed to enable them to pull out and get on the lane to exit, and is therefore the worst place to allow the developer to use as entry and exit point for the construction vehicles unless someone wants to invest their time and cost not at taxpayers' expense in engaging traffic controllers at all times. My next question, are there any safety and cleanup responsibilities addressed to the developer prior to the beginning of the excavation works? It is interesting, however, to note that after the damage on my oldest son's car tire, there has been diligent sweeping of the road outside the access road. In the interim, while the town evaluates the situation, we hope there will be more regular sweeping of the road during the day, such as in the afternoon prior to kids letting out of school, especially when the kids are let out from the high school and middle school, and those who drive, and also prior to the dismissal time of the Squadron Line kids, and prior to evening pick hour. Okay, next question, is there a stipulated time when excavation works should start in the day?
If you could just, also, two things summarize, and then...
Yes, I'm down to the last.
...of your comments, too. That'd be great.
Yes, noise levels were high in the early morning, as early as 6:00 a.m. or even earlier. At the start, the noise was ongoing with tons of construction vehicles traveling in and out outside, and not just excavation noises. This is in spite of closed doors and windows. Understandably, there will be a level of noise emanating from the construction activities by 6:00 a.m. or earlier. There's something to be said about lack of consideration for residents near and around, and those living right near the front end of the street. Okay, when spring comes, we have concerns about the level of dust and pollutants from digging that will travel into the house, no matter how you keep the doors and windows closed. And even in summer, the AC will not still keep it out completely. What measures are the town taking to address these health risks they pose to people like me, who has severe skin allergies, and I'm not exaggerating about that, and my child whose asthma are under control? Most importantly, there ought to be a review to move the entry exit access from the present location to a location where there's greater line of visibility for all users. Finally, how do I file the claim for the damage on my oldest son's tire? Jeff has my number, and I would like somebody from town to contact me to tell me the process or procedure to do that. And this is not separate, could the town work or ask the Public Works Department to install a sign prior to passing Clifton Drive to make drivers aware that there's immediate street on the right? Because there has been an increase of fast approaching drivers coming from that direction over the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two things, just if I could have your name and address for the record.
Wendy, and Newberry Court 3.
Okay. And secondly, I'd be happy to set up a meeting between the town, our staff, I think our engineer is here, and happy to have a meeting with the neighbors so we can address your concerns. There's a lot in there, and this is the first I've heard of it. So if you could leave a copy for me, I'd appreciate it. Okay, that'd be great.
This is my copy, you can have it.
Thank you very much.
If I could just say, in full disclosure, that's my street, Newberry Court. So Wendy is my neighbor. I have another neighbor there on the corner, probably also concerned.
And because it's public audience, I think it's important...
So I just want to say that...
Full disclosure?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to set up a meeting with the neighbors and town staff, and then we can meet with the neighbors in here directly.
I'm just...
We'll contact Wendy to give her a date, get a date and time that you're available, and our, our, our town staff will work to... Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, I'm talking here. I want to just make sure that you can hear me. I just want to make sure that we, we'll coordinate it through Wendy, if you're acceptable, and then we'll make sure we do it at a time that's convenient for the neighbors. But thank you for coming here. Anyone else who'd like to address the board at this time? Okay. Thank you all for your comments. We'll move right now to our full agenda, but we have a presentation first. And at this time, I'd like to call on Lisa Kareem, our library director. And welcome, Lisa. And Lisa's going to brief us on a wonderful initiative on behalf of library. Also want to recognize Mary Ann O'Neill, who chairs Library Board of Trustees, so welcome, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm glad I could finally get here. I know I've been on the agenda four or five times, and it's just never worked out. So when I did my budget presentation, I talked a little bit about Makerspaces and how they've evolved in the world, and how public libraries have sort of found their niche in Makerspaces as public library services have changed throughout time. When we took a look at Makerspaces and if it would be something we could do here in Simsbury, or if it was even something we should even try to do here in Simsbury, we realized that it's not a new concept for our library itself. We were already doing Makerspace kinds of projects, hands-on building, hands-on learning, DIY stuff, technology things. We did Lego building with kids. Where else can you take piano and ukulele lessons but at the Simsbury Public Library? And then the Business Resource Center by Nature is a Makerspace. It's where people come together to collaborate and resource share and solve problems. The next thing we did was look at the library's vision statement. And then what we saw was that Makerspaces actually fit in very well with that. The Simsbury Public Library will be the first stop for any needed information in the community, and the overarching purpose of the library is to simplify the complexity of modern life, and we know that it's pretty complex right now with technology the way it is. We support residents of all ages to make smoother transitions in our ever-changing world. We enable all residents to access every available medium through which information may be gained, and provide an environment conducive to thinking and learning. Those four concepts are key to the Maker movement. So when the library board and the town got together and created this vision statement for your library, they were extremely forward-thinking. So knowing we had no money budgeted for this Makerspace initiative, we set out to build grassroots support for it, and we did that through community forums. And what we had seen in other libraries is that Makerspaces have been proven to foster community engagement, and actually we're seeing this as well. Through our community forums, we've had high school students come out, and they volunteer to plan and run programs for us in our, in our Makerspace, which we have now titled "The Innovator's Workshop." We have town residents who have specialized areas of expertise, very energized and excited to be part of this, and we're waiting to put them to good use. We have techies and artists from Make Hartford, which is Hartford's Makerspace. They're ready to offer support and help collaborate with us. And with the support of these community members, we're building on the things that we already have in place very slowly and systematically in incremental steps to develop a Makerspace. We established STEM programs, which support the science, technology, and engineering, and we're adding, A, art, STEAM, and... I lost my train of thought. So anyway, we're adding STEM programs to the kinds of programs that we do at the library with the elementary school age kids. We've already done parachute design, and not only did they design their own parachutes with the help of a high school student, but then they ran them, or used them, to see which one was developed best, which one fell the fastest, which one was the safest. So there's that whole sort of collaborative thinking there. We started a stitching group, and in the future, we'll be planning to, right now, it's mostly, you know, it's in the morning, it's elderly women. But they're wonderful, and they were so excited, and they just wanted a place to come together and collaborate and talk to each other and share project ideas, and which is what they do. But part of the Makerspace movement is to make that multi-generational. So what we're going to do is pair them up during an evening and invite teens and kids and younger generations to come and learn from the older generation. And what else? Let's see. So what we're doing, planning incrementally, we are building up to create a Makerspace. And we don't know what that Makerspace will look like yet, because it's driven by the community. And at the Westport Library, it's totally technology-driven. Maybe that's not the way we want to go here. So we're waiting to see how things play out, and that's part of the Makerspace movement. It's innovation at work. It's sort of fluid. It's meant to be fluid. You need to have some sort of idea where you're going, but it could change at any moment. So depending on the community input and the resources we have available to us, we'll determine what our Makerspace here looks like. Right now, we have a grant into the Connecticut Humanities for a Connecticut at Work Grant. It's a small grant, it's only $1,500, but the library portion of that grant is $300. And we're leveraging those funds to get to, I think I alluded to in my budget presentation, $12,000. So that's, that's an enormous way that we can support the town, the community, and offer resources to the population here. And what it's going to do is set up a 3D printing lab. And we already have volunteers waiting in the wings, they are dying to get into that lab. We also understand that we have a private donation coming in of almost $5,000 to work to support that as well. So there definitely is support in the community, at least for the 3D printing lab. And then once we have that up and running, we'll see where we go from there. And our plan with the 3D printing lab is to have it staffed by community volunteers, certainly supervised by a staff person of the library, but totally staffed by community volunteers, and for the most part, that's what other Makerspaces do as well. So total community engagement. What we're planning is an Innovator's Workshop Maker Event. It's April 26th at the library. We'll have a printing lab demonstration, and that will probably be the unveiling of our printing lab. We'll have maker projects for all ages throughout the day. Stay tuned for what exactly those will be, and I hope you'll all join us. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for being available tonight, bringing your assistance. We're happy to see you.
You've been very good. Thanks.
Excellent, excellent. But a credit to you, Library Board, for supporting this initiative. It's been very exciting, those of us who have been able to take part in the workshops. It's been really tremendous, and you're, you're leveraging a tremendous amount of excitement and energy, working with a lot of partners, and hope by coming here tonight that someone will hear about it and contact you and want to be involved. So congratulations.
Absolutely. So look around town for our Makers Wanted ads, because we're looking for anyone with expertise or talent or gifts to help us out.
Excellent. Lisa?
I'd just like to say, I heard of a wonderful innovative program, and I'm wondering if you know anyone who might have made duct tape Valentines?
Oh, I don't know. Is there any here?
Is there anyone here who might have done that?
The little one in the corner. And they were awesome.
Heard about it. Great job.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. We're really excited.
Any other questions?
For your initiation? Any questions? Nope. We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our action items. Our first is approval of the submission of the 2014... Oh, I'm sorry, just one quick report. The only update I had tonight was on the budget process, our budget process next steps. on the budget process, our budget process next steps. As we end the town's budget workshops, I want to urge our residents to stay involved with the very important process. On Wednesday this week, March 12th, the Board of Education will present their budget to the Board of Finance. Our next meeting will take place on March 24th, at which time the Board will vote on our final version of our budget, including the capital improvement plan and the capital non-recurring budget. We'll present the budget to the Board of Finance the following evening on Tuesday, March 25th. The Board of Finance will then hold a public hearing on the budget on Thursday, April 10. So the schedule thereafter will be determined by the Board of Finance after the public hearing, and the final date for the referendum will in part depend on the number of public hearings that the Board of Finance holds. I want to thank the public for their feedback, our staff for all their hard work, the Board of Selectmen for their thoughtful deliberations, and we look forward to presenting a budget that meets the needs of our taxpayers. So I hope folks will continue to be involved. All of the information on the budget is available on the town website. We'll be posting our all of the information. So folks will want to access that information from home. They don't need to be here to get copies. They can get it right online. So I'm happy to have that information available. We'll now move to our action items. The first item is approval of the submission of the 2014 Small Cities Programming Application for Renovations to the Virginia Connolly Residence Dr. Owen Murphy Apartments. As is required by state law, we did hold a public hearing earlier this evening. We did receive input, and we appreciate everyone who spoke on that. Tonight, we need to ask or answer, and have any questions that you have answered by Ed Lamontagne or staff or about the process. And then we do need to read the resolution to the record and take final action. So any questions on the application?
This is a good question. I'm sure Sheri would volunteer to read that.
[laughing]
What's the timeframe? So we say, we say go, and what happens next?
The grant is submitted by April 7.
Okay.
To Department of Housing. I believe they're going to make a determination on that grant by July 1st.
It's pretty quick for government.
And there's a lot, as I said earlier, you know, credit to Ed and to Tom for organizing just a tremendous amount of paperwork and very technical application process. It's a great project. I think it'll stand up very competitive in getting grant funds. Any other questions?
Thank you, Cheryl, for volunteering to read the resolution to the record.
Okay, well, that's great.
They did it to me.
It's all right. I'm very dedicated to the Housing Authority.
Mike's getting the next one. I was afraid.
No, I'm honored to foster my dedication to the Housing Authority. Whereas, federal monies are available under the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to Public Law 93-383 as amended, and whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Simsbury make application to the state for $800,000 in order to undertake a small cities community development program and to execute an assistance agreement, therefore, should one be offered. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and two, that the filing of an application by the Town of Simsbury in an amount not to exceed $800,000 is hereby approved, and that the first selectman is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Housing, to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner, to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, to carry out approved activities, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Simsbury.
Very well done. Thank you very much. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? All in favor, certified by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much, and good luck, Ed, and we'll work hard with you to make sure that we secure this grant application. Thank you very much. Next item is action and updates on the fiscal year 2014 budget. I'll wait a moment so folks can... That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Oh, my pen. Sorry. Thank you.
Bye, Mark.
Our next item is to, just for the public's information, the Board of Selectmen had a workshop earlier this evening. I will ask town staff to put the latest workshop documents online, if they're not already, so that folks have the most up-to-date information. The Board did direct, did have a consensus for budget, which is a 1.98% budget with offsets for the School Resource Officer. We'll have additional conversations with the Board of Finance on Wednesday. Our staff will prepare the final budget documents for our action on Monday. We will also have a presentation on...
A week from Monday.
A week, I'm sorry, Monday, March 24. At that time, the Board of Ed will also do a presentation on the capital plan for the Board of Ed project. So if the public would like additional information on the town budget, it is available online. There are copies available. It's a very voluminous document, but it is available in hard copy as well at Town Hall. Any other additional comments or questions that the Board might have?
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item is to approve the tax refunds. Our tax collector has recommended tax refunds in the amount of $8,827.39. All of the applicants are listed for the public consumption, and the Board of Selectmen review.
Move that we approve?
Thank you.
Second?
Second. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to discuss waiver fees for the Theater Guild of Simsbury at Eno Hall. This would be for the spring production of Almost Maine, and the dates are April 5th, 6th, 11th, 12th, and 13. Karen Seidel, who's president of the Theater Guild, is here this evening. Welcome, and thank you, and congratulations on all your hard work in putting on this wonderful performance. So the item needs to be waived by only the Board of Selectmen can waive the fees. From motion.
I'll move it.
Any comments? Where can we buy tickets?
You can buy them online or at the door. Our website is www.theaterguild.simsbury.org.
Thank you.
I encourage you all to come. It's going to be wonderful.
Thank you. I'm sure will. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next item is the authorization of... Authorization for the Board of Finance to create a special revenue fund for Public Works. This item came before the Board of Selectmen during our discussions of the budget. It was earlier approved by the Board of Selectmen and sent to the Board of Finance where it was not approved back before your review, which would allow the funds from a variety of sources, including the sale of sand and recycled fill, sale of used vehicles, sale of scrap metal, reimbursements for damages to town assets, and reimbursements for the department over time for special events, such as we talked earlier about, to go into a fund that could then be re-appropriated for purposes of Public Works. It's very specific as to what those funds could be used for, and Tom is here to answer any questions that the Board might have. Welcome.
He did a pretty good job about long.
Any questions?
What were the concerns at the Board of Finance?
The concerns of the Board of Finance, when we brought this to them a few years back, was making sure that there'd be appropriate oversight to what the funds would be used for purchase.
Okay.
I would think that the primary focus of where the fund should be expended would be on facility and maintenance of the Public Works grounds to be used for the purchase and upgrade of town equipment.
And we would have...
Offset our budgetary costs associated with especially our heavy equipment, plowtrucks, loaders, backhoes, things along those lines. One of the interesting things is the town gets to purchase most of our equipment at a deep municipal discount. Sometimes it would make sense for us to be able to sell that equipment before it ends its useful life and take advantage of the fact that we purchased it at a discount. And just by having this as an evolving fund, which we do with their cruisers, it allows us to better manage our assets.
And then you could use the proceeds from that sale to purchase new equipment?
New equipment, exactly.
Without having to go through...
And one of the things I think is that I would be open to, I put the, a draft on the language for the special revenue fund. I'd be open to comment either this Board or members of the Board of Finance in order to make it appropriately restrictive so that everybody would be comfortable in how the funds would be expended.
And just for clarification, the oversight would be the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So any funds expended from the special revenue fund would be subject to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance review. So what we could do is the Board, if by setting up the special revenue fund, Tom could come back and ask Board approval or work with the Board to let Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance know what he was transferring money out, as we do in any other transfer. So there would be proper oversight. Without this fund, any sale from any of those items just goes into the general fund and has to be re-appropriated at the end of the year.
And the other thing that happens, Mark, in used equipment, we end up trading in, we don't get the best value because it's going to someone who's going to sell that on the open market. Or if you're doing the trade-in, it ends up keeping you in the exact same type of equipment, because if, for example, we were trading in a John Deere piece of equipment, the John Deere dealership is always going to give you the best value on your trade-in, so it locks out some of the other competitors, really reducing our competitive procurement process.
Do you see anything in this agreement that's overly restrictive, that would prevent you from being able to take advantage of all those opportunities to...
No, I think the biggest thing is we want to have a fund which allows us to take in revenue. Right now, Public Works historically had never taken in revenue. I'm a big fan of taking in revenue. We've been really willing to encourage our staff to come up with ways to generate revenue. We've been diligent in if there's a car accident that takes out guardrails, if there's a car accident that takes out a street sign, we go down through records, spark, and we get a copy of that, and of course, we come up with a bill and send it to the insurance company.
That's a new policy. That hadn't been done previously by the town. So I think it's a credit to Tom in terms of just making sure that the town is reimbursed for costs that we're out of pocket without any fault of our own. So, you know, it seems to be a very fair process. So it's a good incentive for our staff to be creative.
Absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
The Board, I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen vote this tonight and send it to the Board of Finance, so they have a chance to look at the policy. And certainly, we'd be open to getting it back to the Board of Selectmen for any final revisions. But it certainly would start the discussions. Sean and then Nancy.
Just to jump on the initial comments made, I very much agree with this. Yeah, my only thought would be, and not to hamstring you, but if there's a way at the beginning of the year, you know you're going to get approximately X in the fund, if you want to come before this Board and the Board of Finance and say, "I'm going to buy three trucks." To me, that would be okay, you know, versus having to come in every single time, if you can plan that far in ahead. So give you multiple options so that you have the flexibility.
I think actually what you said would be multi-block, which is at the budget cycle time, if we are anticipating XYZ, we would lay that out throughout the year. For whatever reason, we saw opportunity. I would think that then, as long as it has the provision, we come in front of Board of Selectmen and notify that this is our intent.
So I don't know what the specific language would be, but under, you know, B to A, you know, budget approval, either during the normal budgetary process and/or on an ad hoc basis, or as needed basis by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance would, I think, would satisfy what Lisa was saying and Mary Ann. I know that would satisfy what I'm looking for. And not overly restrict you, because again, happy to manage it. I think it's more of, okay, we know kind of what's going on. Now, all right, we got CNR over here, we've got capital over here, we've got the special revenue fund, just making sure we know where all the pieces are.
You're exactly right. And setting it up, we, you know, we'll see how it works. We'll try it, see how much revenue is generated, and then, you know, see what Tom's recommending in terms of offsetting some of the other expenditures.
Yeah. I admire it. Good creativity. This is, I think this is a good thing.
Just to comment, when you were talking about to spend, it is more reiterating what Sean was talking about, capital and CNR, not operation, not operational funds. I mean, in other words, if you've got things that are reoccurring each year, you're not paying salary with this, you're not doing that kind of thing. It's just, and I think it's nice, because we'll see on the CIP a line item that offsets like a grant or like a WPCA fund does, and it can just kind of be right on there and show us how that fund is being produced.
Yeah, it may be something, again, you could end the year recording as part of the budget cycle, too, which is, you know, this past year, this is how the fund, these are the sources of income, these are the sources of...
And I think, just to get to that point, it is restricted in the language that Tom proposed. It's, we use offset material cost equipment purchases, facility and roadway maintenance programs. So there's no ongoing capital, ongoing operational needs that are allowed to be purchased into this.
That's good.
Other questions?
I like it.
Any want to take a moment?
I think I'd make a motion to approve the Public Works Special Revenue Fund.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Just to clarify what those suggested changes on the budgetary approval process?
Feedback from the Board of Finance.
Do you want to change this to two A?
Again, whatever they, I don't know what the specific language needs to be, but just...
So we'll include the comments on budget process and send it to the Board of Finance for consideration.
Yes, that's what I...
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Stay right where you are. We are now, yes, Tom, to come forward to the Board just to update you on our sidewalk policy. The Town of Simsbury has a very old sidewalk policy that really isn't working very well. It's really not being implemented. There's no recognition that there is a difference between the multi-use trails and actual sidewalks, and there really isn't a process that the town is following in terms of reimbursement for sidewalks. So Tom did a great job in sort of pulling everything together under one policy. And I thought he'd just walk through the policy tonight. We're not asking for a vote. We just wanted to give the public notice that we are looking at a sidewalk policy, so folks have comments or concerns, and then we can discuss the next step. So no vote tonight. Just, Tom's here, he's going to walk you through it, and then we can talk about comment after his presentation.
I think the biggest challenge we have is terminology. You know, we have multi-use paths, we have sidewalks, and we have trails. We have different maintenance requirements for each of those, and I think the best example of this is on West Street, where on the north side of the road, it's a multi-use path. It was installed as part of the DOT project. It was paid for by Connecticut DOT. And on the south side, we have a sidewalk. And although residents and businesses do not necessarily see a difference in those two things, it makes a major difference to businesses where on the south side, they're responsible for the maintenance of that sidewalk, including snow removal. And on the north side, the town does all of the snow removal. When it comes time to replace a sidewalk in Simsbury, it's responsibility, as it's currently listed, to the abutting property. We have some cases, as we did for a while in Owensboro, where the sidewalk was actually behind your house. So if you were to follow the ordinance and clear the snow, you'd have to take your snow thrower for a little walk down the neighborhood, round the corner, up the street to clear the snow. There was no direct access from your driveway. And so what we did on Owensboro is when we redid that, we modified that to be a multi-use path for just that reason. It didn't seem practical and reasonable to burden somebody with that challenge. If you go up a little bit further in that same neighborhood, you have sections of sidewalk where we have sidewalk on one side of the street and not the other. So we're asking a neighborhood to not share the cost, but to put the burden on one side of the street and not the other. So all of the children in the neighborhood walk to school on that same sidewalk. One side of the street is responsible for clearing the snow, and in the end, the sidewalk's lifespan, 20 years down the road, when the town reconstructs the sidewalk according to our current ordinance, we are supposed to assess the abutting property owners that cost. If we were West Hartford, where we had sidewalks on both sides of the street, I think there could be an argument made for that. But I think with the makeup we have in our neighborhoods, I just don't think that really passes the straight face test, as saying that's fair and reasonable to our residents. I think that as we look forward in Simsbury, you have balance, you can be in a rural community, you can be in a community that wants to promote a healthy environment, a healthy lifestyle, a walkable community, a vibrant community. So what I tried to do is kind of frame the discussion, and I think there's really some larger policy decisions here, because if we are to take over the maintenance of the sidewalks, there's some small legal items associated with that, and there's also the cost.
Thanks, Tom. I think this is a great beginning of a conversation. I think it might be helpful for the Board to, you could kind of explain under each section what the town is currently responsible for. So inventory, that might be helpful for the Board to see what we're currently maintaining.
Right now, on our sidewalks, which we're just shy of about 14 miles of sidewalk, all of the maintenance falls to the abutting property owners, if that's simple, including the cost for reconstructing the sidewalk when it wears out. Multi-use paths, the town takes full responsibility for those. We clear the snow on those only where it's adjacent to a roadway. Most of our trails, we don't clear the snow because it can be used for crossfire, for schemes, don't you, and the like. But Owensboro Boulevard, West Street, Iron Horse, we do all of the snow removal on that. The stone dust and multi-use paths, we maintain them to be in safe condition, and I think we discussed that a little earlier today. No snow removal. And then there's a, we have a lot of neighborhood trails, which interconnect. One of the primary goals we have on that is just to get a good map of where they all are. Maintenance, again, on those is just to take care of immediate hazards. If a broken limb above the trail, it'll be removed. But other than that, they're somewhat rural and naturally occurring.
That's it? Sounds simple. Of course, there's budget implications. That's why the conversation right now is so important, because it's plenty of time to put some policy in place for next budget year.
And if we're looking at replacements of sidewalks with blacktop, with asphalt, you're looking basically about $5 a foot. This is the ballpark number, so if you want to think about what that is.
So Tom, if we could get an inventory to take a look at what the budgetary implications would be, what we're currently doing, that might be helpful for us to move the policy. Question?
How many feet do you have?
For every foot, a bare minimum, it's about $5.
But how many feet? You said how many, how much sidewalk do you have?
About 13 miles. So 5,200, maybe 13.
So Tom, what do we do now? I mean, as far as enforcement goes, I mean, do we have any?
It's been known for.
Except when there is, when the police receive notice that a sidewalk is not cleared, that police are dispatched and the law, there's a fine, cars are towed, and there is a.
There's a couple different things, and I misunderstood your question. For something meant for if somebody has a broken and deteriorated sidewalk, that they're not repairing.
No, I'm talking about like a sidewalk that's inaccessible because of snow.
Yeah. What happens is a lot of times we get the call from a resident, sometimes it comes through Public Works, we coordinate with the police department to go out, and they have the ability to get tickets. Unfortunately, in some cases, they haven't been able to contact the homeowner or to bait the property, in which case Public Works ends up hiring somebody to clear that, and then we do our best to go after the landowner for the cost. Our best.
Well, it's a challenge. And as we add, you know, obviously, as we add more trail systems, or we, folks like it, and it's great, but if the town doesn't have control over a sidewalk, we can't repair it because it's private. So we run into situations where we have to work with the property owner to get them to repair a sidewalk because we are getting complaints that the sidewalk is not in good repair. But we often can't get the cooperation of the property owner. So the sidewalk sits and disrepair is a safety hazard.
Well, I was just thinking about what you said earlier about the walk to school initiatives and stuff, and I know, you know, around Squadron Line, that there's a lot of sidewalks that are in desperate need, but, you know, I agree with you. It's not always fair to only charge, you know, one or two homeowners for the replacement of what could be a rather large section of sidewalk.
Right.
Say their house is on the corner. Which there are a couple of them around me where the sidewalk goes all the way around, you know, two sides of the property.
The other, I think, major impact is on businesses, and what do we want to do to promote good business climate?
Right.
The way the sidewalk ordinance currently reads, you have 24 hours after the snow storm to get it cleared. Is that really acceptable in a downtown area where we want people walking on sidewalks sooner rather than later? And is it something that the town would want to entertain, taking over that maintenance responsibility and making a business district?
So there's a lot of costs, you know, the bottom line is, it costs a lot of money to maintain sidewalks. And the question is, what's the town's policy going to be to make sure it's fair, but at the same time realizing, we just had budget discussions that now it's tough to come in with a budget and to add, you know, a significant amount of money onto that, it's going to be a challenge.
And, you know, I can tell you, we have a short discussion on this before this presentation, and rarely have I ever presented anything to this board without a recommendation. But this one, it really becomes a decision of, you know, what do you want, what do you want to bait?
I was just going to say, and Tom and I have spoken about this a couple of different times, but I'm going to go back to my request for, same thing with the trails. When we come back, we have more discussions about this, if we can kind of have a map. It's helpful to know. You mentioned that we already clear certain swaths of, you know, down Route 10, and there's some that we just don't by virtue of how it's defined in here. So connecting those pieces together, what would be the cost to do that? How does that help the business district? And where are the holes, I guess, is a helpful start to understand those pieces coming together. And I just echo Cheryl's comments of seeing the neighborhoods where kids are walking to school, and there's the mounds of snow. And I know that Public Works was back out pushing those snow mounds farther back just to have looks like sight lines more visible for cars, but also for pedestrians too.
Yeah, and I think one of the things we probably do a better job on is difficult is we're trying to get to the sight lines as soon as possible. Every day, the snow is just a risk as it kind of comes right over the intersection. But there is the important installation that if we take a front-end loader and pile snow 14 feet high in a sidewalk, we can't ask the resident.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks, I'm looking forward to getting some useful information.
Okay, thank you.
Next item is approval of the fees for Simsbury Farms Golf, the aquatic facilities. We jury speakers tonight to review the changes that are being recommended. Jerry, you want to walk everybody through the recommendation?
Thank you. Actually, this is the, these fees, both the aquatic and the golf fees, originally went through the Park and Rec Commission back in January. Unfortunately, the Simsbury Farms Complex Committee usually is the first group to screen these and make recommendations, was not able to meet. They were asked for their comments, they made comments, and the fees were recommended accordingly. They, since then, they did have, they actually had another meeting on March 6 last week. So they were able to, the commission asked them to go back and retroactively approve those. Actually, there were a couple of changes that were made. In the meantime, that we're able, I think I mentioned at the budget workshop, were able to project out a few more dollars. And that was approved both unanimously at the Complex Committee and the Park and Rec Commission. And the process, you know, is pretty much the same every year. The first thing that both groups do is to look at the survey that we do of our counterparts and similar courses in the area and try and get a handle on where we fit in and how we can, you know, obviously take into consideration that we're in a very competitive market. So you can see, I did attach, I believe I attached the survey. That's the first thing, and it is discussed, you know, at length and taking into consideration some courses are better situated for traffic and attracting play than we are, or a bit of a destination. And we probably set our fees accordingly. We do a lot with specials, we do a lot to try and attract non-residents in, given the capacity that we have. And I think over the last couple of years, it's been successful. Given that, combined with the improvements that we've done to the course, I think we've been able to really hold our own, where a lot of other courses have struggled and have been closed. So by and large, I think the other piece of this is we do have a marketing plan that's reviewed every year by the commission. We try and, you know, really stay current, we try and look at new trends, new ideas. And, you know, between the Complex Committee and the commission, I think we've got people that have given us some good input along with our pro-shop staff. So this is, you know, again, you can see the recommendations for the coming year, how they compare with last year. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jerry. When do you want the fees to go into effect? When are you asking for them to go into effect?
Well, the golf fees, we want to get, let's say, we want to get on our website and get out in the public as soon as possible. And the pool fees, same thing. We run a preseason pass rate that we.
So as of the date of the action, so as of tonight's night?
Yes, that's correct.
And then, did you break down the additional revenue that you anticipate from each of these fee increases?
It is on a separate, it was on a separate page that actually the commission and the Complex Committee worker, they're looking probably in the vicinity of about $35,000 to $40,000.
Can we get a copy of that?
Absolutely can get it, yeah. It does not take into consideration, again, what we project in the spring of 15. We all park the percentage on that, but.
I think it would be helpful, since the board had a lot of discussions about the revenue fund, if we could get the projections for how it affects the season and the whole fiscal year. Because this will go into effect, I know some of it will be helpful to have the breakdown as to what the fee increase would be this fiscal year, because the increases will be implemented in this fiscal year.
Right.
Which, even though we didn't budget for that, when we budgeted last year, we didn't have the benefit of knowing the fee increase was going to be implemented. So if we could have the breakdown of this fiscal year.
By line item, by each individual fee projecting.
I think it would be helpful to have the breakdown of, yes. So because some line items, you don't have any fee changes. So for example, in the range balls, there's, some of those line items don't have, some of them don't have any increases at all. So you wouldn't anticipate any additional revenue from that. But in the areas where you're anticipating additional revenue, it'd be helpful to have the breakdown for this fiscal year and for next fiscal year.
The total allotted that we look at from this pre is $35,000.
It would be helpful to have the breakdown.
I can break it up by line items, certainly.
I think it'd be helpful because when we do the budget next year, we'll go back and look at what we projected and what we actually received.
Okay.
So I think that'll be helpful to us anticipating what the fee schedules will be. And then also, I know you were bringing forward the apple barn changes, those are not recommended tonight.
It's going to have to go to the, it'll go to the next, to the Park and Rec Commission at their next meeting for that policy change.
Great, thank you. Questions? Nancy and then Sean.
This is just a, I noticed on the first page here of fees that you had the, under the residents, the junior, senior 18 hole was $21 for 2013. And it just didn't, it didn't match up with what was on the other side of the page, the senior citizen weekday 18 hole for 2013, you had it $19. So I just was curious, were we at $19 for 2013 or $21?
2013, I believe we were $21.
Twenty-one.
And we're recommending 22.
First page, okay.
The junior, senior 18, right?
On the back page, it's just marked the other way around.
So, yeah, just, it was just a didn't jive thing, and I wanted just to get a good sense of what the increase really was.
I see what you're saying.
Here?
Yep.
Okay, so 21 it is.
So the comparison, are you taking the new, what are you using for your comparison? The other municipal courses that you're comparing, are those fee increases already implemented, or will those be?
No, these are all, these are all 2013 fees.
Right, so how will the new fee schedule stack up to, I guess, when people say they're going to play golf, they're not going to compare last year's fee.
Right.
They're going to say, how much does it cost me to play golf this year, and how much does it cost me to play golf?
Well, those other courses are in the same place we are.
Right, but I think it'll be helpful for us to see that up to date after all the courses have.
After the fact, when it's all done?
Yes.
Yep, that's fine.
So if we could have that as well. So we're comparing apples to apples for the current fiscal year, because obviously, if our rates went up, but other courses have, rates have gone up higher, that'll tell us something. And if our rates have gone up and other courses have lowered their rates, that will also tell us something. So I think that would be very helpful for the board to have. And as a corollary to that, if our rates go up and our usage goes down, then I think we should know. And, you know, do you get statistics from those surrounding courses also?
I do, yeah.
So we should be able to see how that.
We talk amongst each other, try and see where, you know, where we are, what we're finding. You know, again, the, you know, other course, every course is unique in terms of, you know, their location, their demographic.
Sure, yeah.
But year to year, those, like year to year yours, it's hard to get out.
I'm sorry.
Do you look year to year at theirs the same way you look year to year to ours? So as you're going along through the season, you're looking at their use?
Yeah, I mean, it's more, you know, it's more word of mouth during the season. I mean, we kind of, you know, we talk amongst each other and see where we are, what are you seeing, what are the trends that you're finding? You know, basically, once we set our, you know, once we set our fees, our policies, our marketing, you know, once we go into our marketing initiative, we're really, you know, we're in this to, you know, do as well as we can. And, you know, we, like I said, everyone is different. And for the fact that we are, you know, really more of a destination, we need to attract people to come out here, we need to attract more outings. There are other courses that don't want outing and tournament play. We do. So everyone is, you know, is different there. But I think, you know, to, to answer your question, we do look and we do talk, and it's something we've, we have like, we used to do it just about every year, we do it probably every other year, and now we have kind of a round table for all the municipal golf courses, and just talk about, you know, where we are, what some of the challenges we're facing. So, and it's helpful. And, you know, as much as, you know, we're different, we're the same in a lot of ways too. So, you know, we're always looking to see what, you know, what others are doing and, you know, try and, you know, make it, make our operation better.
I just think for us, since we're kind of focused on planning now, particularly for Parks and Rec, that it would be helpful, you know, for you to come back with those numbers on a regular basis. You know, as Mr. Payne asked, I think the last time we were talking about the financial updates, you know, it would be good to see how our usage is going. You know, it doesn't have to be every month, but, you know, as we get into, how many season passes have you sold compared to last year, you know, and then we'll know better when next year comes along whether to raise those rates more or hold the line.
Yeah.
You know, I think we have to take a close look at this.
Well, and that's, so a couple of things. One, I agree with almost everything you said, except I think it would be helpful to see it on a monthly basis, because if, as Marion Nasty said, I mean, if play is down because of what we just did, we need to know that sooner rather than later, so that we can hopefully address it and not create a larger hole. Two, you mentioned specials. So the specials that you're talking about, are the four on this fee or on this chart, or are there additional specials that are out there as well?
Those are the ones that we, that we offer from really start to finish.
Okay.
And then there, we also, the Park and Rec Commission is, you know, gives some latitude, you know, for us to look at, you know, if there are periods and we know there's going to, there are downtimes, we can try and throw out a special that, you know, to get, you know, to get people up there. But these are the ones that we publish, this is the ones that we put out there, and these are the ones I think the discretionary player is really looking at, and this is the one that we're trying to get them, you know, get them to Simsbury Farms with.
To follow up on that point, I think it would be helpful for us to have a report of the specials that you do offer, and to see how those have been effective or not. So in addition to the ones that we're offering on a regular basis, if there are any additional incentives that you offer, just a report of those and when they were offered and what they generated revenue.
Right.
That will give us a sense too, as to whether that's working and that's something we want.
We do, you know, with the, with the new software that we use for their starting time system that we approved here, we do a lot more capability to report on that and to break, really break all those apart, you know, when they work, when they're, you know, they're most effective. So that's, it's a lot easier for us to do that now than it was, you know, a couple years ago.
Just to piggyback on that, I mean, technically, I think we're supposed to approve those, so it would be good to have them on the list, because all the fees are supposed to come through us. So it'd be good for us to know what they are, so that we can kind of just keep those, keep those legal, so.
I think that's a good point. Maybe we'll work with the Parks and Rec Commission. Jerry, if you could recommend what you want to do, and then the Parks and Rec can review it, and we can give a blanket parameter of how many, I think you're right.
Not looking for you to come to us and ask for them, just put them on the list.
As far as the specials, the ones that are here are the ones that we go.
All right, just, yeah, just keep them on the list so that it's easy for you guys to administer, and you don't have to come back here and ask for them midstream.
So just to follow up on additional information that the board would need is the new fee schedule comparisons for fiscal year 14 and 15, and the revenue expected to be generated by those fees, the usage numbers and the comparisons of other towns with the 2014 rates, and then the specials and those items.
Now, we can get those to you down.
Yeah, I think that the comparisons, the revenue expected to be generated, that's something you should have, so we'll have that on our next meeting. And then the new fee schedule comparisons, when you have the other courses have set their rates, that's when we'll get those.
Can we get these fees, these fees approved? Can we get these fees, these fees approved?
Yeah, I, yeah, I recommend that we adapt, they take action tonight, and then we'll do follow up afterward.
I move that we approve the fees as proposed.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Great, thank you.
We're going to leave you hanging for two meetings, Jerry.
Yeah, that was, the next item, before you go too far, there's a gathering, public gathering permit applications. First is the MS Society for their annual walk on April 6th, Simsbury Grand Rotary Club for the annual river run on April 27th, the Tri-Simsbury Triathlon Committee for their race on May 18th, and the Hartford Marathon Foundation for their Iron Horse Half Marathon on June 1st. And you've gone through the process and recommend all of those items.
On February 12th, we held a meeting right in this room, and all these organizations, as well as a few others, were invited. We had representatives from fire, police, foreign and valley health, public works, planning, myself, performing arts. So, they gave the opportunity, everyone was there, and it gave for the groups to come in, instead of them having to go out and find, you know, find all these people for their sign-offs. Most of it was able to be done right here. So, these groups were, basically, the process was they, they completed the application, they got the sign-offs they needed, they turned it into planning, who certifies that everything is complete, insurance certificate, and then I get together with them. And these four have done everything, their applications are complete, and in some cases, they're still working along with the town. The triathlon is working along with the police, but they have completed every, you know, everything was asked of them. So, we will have, we're having another meeting, just so you know, our next one is April 8th, I believe, and we'll have a number of the events for the meadows, we'll have probably about four or five other events that will be seeking approval then, and we should be able to get, get those turned around really quickly.
Great, it's a great process, so thank you, Jerry. And do you post these on your website, so that folks have notice that these events are happening?
Um, we don't, we don't, we could.
Yeah, I just think if the towns approving, they should appear somewhere, even since we've approved them.
Town's website too.
Yeah, so if you could work, work on getting those items on the calendar, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Can I have a motion to approve?
Move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is the extension of ground leases for agricultural properties. These, the requests have come through for George Hall Farm, the Anthony Palatano for Barn door Hill Road, George Hall Farm for Barn door Hill Road, and Rosedale Farm for the Baker property and the Drake Hill Road. The fees are all, have all been reviewed and are recommended for the board this evening. The Ferris Farm Quarry Road one, until that closes, the town will continue to own that and to charge a rental fee, and then we'll reappropriate the funding that's left in the balance should the property close before the license extension period ends. Any questions?
Are we getting close on that Ferris Farm?
My understanding with the Simsbury Land Trust is that it will close this fiscal year. They, they are anticipating any problems with that project. Everything seems to be in place, and we're just waiting for the documents to be forwarded to the town in order for us to bring those back to the board.
Okay.
Mary, are these fees consistent with what they've been charged from the past?
Yes, and this, they're, they're all comfortable with the amounts, they have all issued letters seeking renewal of the license, so it seems to be working well. This is the purpose of town farmland, is that it continues to be farmed, and we're glad we have local farmers who abide by our organic farming practices, so.
That's good stuff.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is submission of a 2014 steep grant application. Jeff Shea is here and has worked at Rich Switzke in the transition process, and we asked town staff to examine all the town's needs and come up with the strongest application they could possibly come up with. These steep grants are very competitive. We've had good success in the past for getting the grant applications. They're, as I said, they're very competitive, so you need to tell a really broad story that it's going to have an, the application's going to have an economic development component, an arts component, a sustainability and walkability component. So, just want to thank Jeff for putting together, we hope and think is a very strong application. So, Jeff, I don't know if you want to review the application?
Yeah, just quickly, you know, we looked, staffing and the board, first selectmen's office reviewed various alternatives for applying for steep money. It seemed recently, in my, my experience, that the project really has to have some pizzazz for it to get approved. Streetscape projects somewhat out of favor right now, so you really need something that's going to stand out, that has a regional sort of impact, and it can stand out from the crowd. So, we felt, looking at the original master plan for the Performing Arts Center and the need for restroom facilities down at Iron Horse, that we could potentially build a public restroom facility that could be, you know, used by more than just the Performing Arts Center for the various events that occur down there. It's kind of a, an island relative to amenities, like the restrooms, and also potentially provide a green, green room for the performances, which, you know, would attract maybe some better performances, some people that really demand that kind of a facility. On a limited sort of basis, we could do that within the $500,000. Beyond that, we could expand that facility. The way that the footprint has been conceived, we could expand it in the future if we got additional funds from private sources or the like. So, seemed like something that might catch their eye and get approved as part of that process.
Thanks, Jeff. There's also funding in the outer years for the Performing Arts Center. So, in the application, the town would also be showing that we're leveraging state grant funds with future capital dollars as well. So, you know, it's certainly worth a shot. There's not a town match required. So, whatever we get, we would be really grateful for, and it would just be additional funding that we didn't have right now. Sean?
Again, I've never written a grant application, but it would seem to me that we probably want to include some opportunity for educational experience and, you know, seniors and kids to come down there versus green rooms and toilets. Might not be the best way to...
This is...
Characterize it. And I've never written a grant application before, but I'd put a lot of on the, you know, the educational opportunities and the cross-community impact and what that does, because I think your point on regional is exactly right. It can benefit more. And again, the ancillary benefit clearly, you know, it does make the facility more accessible, and it does a lot for more shows, but I think there's multiple uses that can benefit. You know, we are looking at different options for seniors, and, you know, and there's some cross-benefit there, you know, that might help. I've never written one of these applications before, but if I was reading it, that might be what I'd want to see.
Yes, no, good suggestion.
Do you, do you see these facilities being used only by the Performing Arts Center during those?
No.
Well, and if not, if you're going to have public restrooms down at Iron Horse, which are going to be used by 100 kids playing soccer and spilling Gatorade all over, I would anticipate maintenance costs for...
There certainly is going to be operational maintenance costs. You know, that's something that comes with the territory that hasn't been fully vetted, but, you know.
You got that Park Bank public works person. Yeah.
It's limited, it's not, you know, it's not going to serve hundreds of people, you know, it's going to be limited. But it is designed to serve both the Performing Arts Center and the public.
Right.
So, there's flexibility.
And we wouldn't, if, it's going to take a long time for us to get the grant and to actually construct it, so we'll have time to answer those questions.
Who's going to use it, yeah.
You know, it's difficult, because you don't want to do too much planning, because you're not going to get, if you don't get the grant, and if you don't get the grant, then there's not really, so it's, it's, it's a tough decision to make, because you want to go in with your strongest application process, and then you, you know, obviously, we're going to have to have a lot of conversations if we do get the grant as well. Yeah, other questions?
Any comments from the Performing Arts Center folks about, sort of, you know, you mentioned donations and things like that, I was just, I'm sure that they were excited about this, I was just curious about any comments they had.
Yeah, I did talk to the chairman, Dave Ryan, I believe, and, did I get that name right?
Yes.
A lot of names, trying to remember here. And he was excited about it, he thought it was a great opportunity. I mean, they have other needs and other wants, but again, within the context of the steep grant and trying to, again, be a little bit unique, he was comfortable with us going forward with this application, and he let the rest of the board know.
If I can add to that, that you all approved a facility operation agreement, part of that was an agreement to work in conjunction with the new PSC board to try to make capital improvements that would in fact help them to lower their costs as they're, as they're trying to run shows. Certainly, having a whole bunch of portable toilets is, to the extent we can mitigate some of those costs, will, will help them with what they charge for overhead.
Good point. Other questions?
Dave Ryan is out of town, as you know, but it'll, we think the green room thing would definitely help attract more talent, and by doing that, we also eliminate rentals, you know, those beautiful trails we have to rent for us and for HSO, and that would help with that a lot. Plus, every town, if you run a bike, sometimes the portable's aren't really attractive, and if this could, you know, we'd probably end up even, I'll clean the restrooms if you're a person to get them, so. But anyway, we think it would be a real, a start of this stuff, so it's something you can go for. The pack board is definitely a fair one, so thank you for considering it.
Thank you. Other questions?
What's the timing on this? When would you know?
The grant has to be, actually, submitted by April 15th. The governor's office, I think, really releases them periodically throughout the year for, I think, political reasons, but, so it's that, because that is...
Don't put that in the application either.
It used to be, actually, I think, the opposite, at the same time, but that kind of changed over the recent years.
So, we don't, we don't know. Could be anywhere from a few months to a year.
I'm thinking October will probably be a good time.
It's an election year, keep your fingers crossed.
Good timing for to fill the application.
Let's get a couple of these puppies in there. Sorry about that.
Can I have...
I move that we authorize the submission of the 2013 steep grant application for improvements at the Performing Arts Center.
I'll second that. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff. Good luck, write a, write a good one, so. The next item is authorization for the first selectman to execute the Homeland Security Grant Program application. This is really for informational purposes. The board actually had already directed that the grant could be filed on an ongoing basis. The town receives funds, but the funds then go to, back to the region to be used as, in, for regional purposes. So, this is just allowing the town, as recommended by our emergency preparedness director, Kevin Kowalski, as recommended by him, to be able to file the grant. Any questions? Okay, great. Next item is to, you don't need to vote on it. Next item is to approve assignment of the Hartford Symphony Orchestra contract to the Simsbury Performing Arts Center pursuant to our facilities operation agreement. Just for the record, their town does not fund a performing arts center. The Performing Arts Center used to be a subcommittee of the, of the town, no longer is a subcommittee, and as a result, there is no special revenue fund, the town doesn't budget for any funding other than our capital asset. The Performing Arts Center is a town asset, and it is on town land, but there are no operational costs budgeted. In fact, under the facilities operation agreement that this board approved, we do, we do charge fees for use of town staff and uses, so thanks to Tom Cook for negotiating that. Pursuant to our initial agreement, the town needs to authorize the Hartford Symphony Orchestra contract with the Performing Arts Center. So, Tom, I don't know if you want to add any additional information? Any questions?
I move that we approve the assignment of the HSO contract.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to appoint committees. First is to appoint the Community for Care Committee members. I want to thank Lisa Hevner for her work with Woody Edens on this for a couple of years, and Cheryl Cook for joining in and helping to advertise this committee, and really just thanking all the people who, who came out from the community who wanted to serve. So, I don't know, Lisa, if you want to add anything, and Cheryl?
I'd just like to thank everyone who applied. We had an overwhelming response, which was very heartwarming to see how much our community cares and wants to have an impact in making sure that the whole community is cared for. We weren't able to take everyone, because there was just such an overwhelming response, but we do appreciate everyone. There were, we're hopeful there'll be opportunities throughout the year where we can bring in people in various projects.
Great.
So, thanks to everyone.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, I was, I was really overwhelmed at the qualifications of the people who came forward. They are all highly qualified in their fields, you know, they're all involved in different aspects of the community and of the, you know, services that we'd like to address, and it was, it was great. So, I'm, I'm really happy we're able to go forward with this. Thanks to Lisa for putting that all together, that's...
All right, do we have a motion to appoint the committee?
I'd move that.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to appoint Steve Mitchell as a representative to the Capital Regional Tourism District. This recommendation comes from the Tourism Committee, so I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is accept the resignation with our thanks to Nancy Toma from the Recycling Committee.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item is to change the resignation date of Denise Alfeldt from the Historic District Commission to June 1st, 2014. She's willing to serve until June, which gives folks time to replace, make a replacement, so our thanks to Denise.
So, do we have to rescind, or do we have to reappoint her? Because we took her off last time.
We have to clarify the resignation is not accepted until June 1st. I think the last action was to accept it as of the date of the board's...
Yeah.
And now, we're extending the resignation till, not accepting the resignation until June 1st. I think we can do it that way. Extend the resignation until, make it effective June 1st, and that would rescind our previous action.
Okay.
Would you like to move that?
I made that motion, yes.
I'll second that, what you said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, to appoint Rosemary Fusco to the Recycling Committee for term to expire December 7th, 2015.
Move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the February 24th minutes. Any comments, corrections, changes?
Move that we approve.